Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, July 6th, 2021 Tinsborough School Committee Meeting. We call this meeting to order and we'll start with introductions to my left.
Good evening, Robert Mullen.
Ryan McMahon.
Good evening, Mark Branko, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Becky Stanton.
Julie Costucci.
Dustine Puma.
Anthony Tannara.
Joe Messina, Business Administrator.
Grace Campbell is the new president.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And start with the approval of minutes. I'll seek a motion to approve the June 29th, 2021, school committee meeting minutes and the June 8th, 2021, negotiation executive session minutes. The executive session minutes are not to be released at this time.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 6-0-0. Correspondence?
None at this time, Madam Chair.
Census in time. Mr. Crawford.
I should introduce myself to those on camera. Billy Crawford, 83 Frost Road. I'm the current Finance Committee Chairman. We'll soon be reorganizing and see if that's going to still be the case. Happy 4th of July.
Happy 4th of July.
It's been a belated. It's been nice. And congratulations to the new school committee officers.
Thank you.
We'll have a lot of work ahead of me coming this next year, as you did this past year. So, I wrote down my comments, as I like to do, so I make sure that I don't get things wrong. The central theme of my comments this evening is communication. On a positive note, Bert Bushman has been excellent, providing timely information about the potential middle school. He's been really updating us regularly, giving us information. I, in particular, the last preferred schematic report, has begun to bring a focus to where we're really going with the way the middle school project's going. I won't throw out the numbers because those are prelimin-- they had some numbers in there, but I won't put those out on the air because I know those are very preliminary numbers and I don't really want to be talking about them. The other thing was unfortunately, the fiscal '22 school budget that we had, the season was very difficult to follow this past year. The focus on COVID, no doubt, was partly or mostly responsible for the lack of communication. But next year, I suggest that reaching out is preferable to having us look for what's happening on our agenda. So I'd ask you, next time you talk about budget, budget's going to be in your meetings, please send the chair an email so we know it's going to happen. Thank you. And I know COVID was largely a problem this year, but I think we could have done better. And I am pleased that the SOLAR article won unanimous approval. It may surprise some here, but it was unfortunate that the so-called Scrivener area, Scrivener era change at, from "at" to "on" couldn't have been made prior to town meeting. Because I actually supported SOLAR, but I didn't support that word. So I'm asking the committee to consider electric vehicle chargers at a location on this side of the river. The town is currently charging thirteen and a half cents per kilowatt at the other public locations. I've informed Liz Entiavecchia, the Chair of the Sustainability Committee, of this request. I think she and the town administration may be helpful if the committee decides to pursue that when you're looking for grants. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Great, share the success. Grace?
So, at TES Administration has been busy working on their strategy for district improvement. Principal Cavanaugh and her team look forward to sharing updates on their priority areas for the upcoming school year. The TES Administration also recently participated in a webinar hosted by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education regarding the Massachusetts Dissection Guidelines, whose guidelines require the districts to implement inclusive early identification screening process. These screenings are being placed three times through a near kindergarten in the second grade. And today, TES began hosting their expecting learning services, their Jump Start Learning Academy, and Elphomest. At TMS, the school year also under well, each grade participated in a meal day activities after they had completed their MCAS testing. The eighth graders signed for their yearbooks and they had a moving on ceremony. The schedule is for next year to be built right now. The maintenance is making progress on the building and the teachers are looking forward to having their students back in school. And they're going to be having a sixth grade orientation later in August. At the high school, our spring sports finished softball, won the D2 Central Championship last Monday, and the state championship the following year.
Hold on a second, you can't cowwash that. Congratulations to all the ladies and all the girls on the team. Quite an accomplishment.
As a team, we would like to thank the Administration, the TES Pro Parents, and the whole community for all their support. Because we got to take a cross bus there, we have a cruise escort all the way to the highway, and there were families and younger softball players lined along the route cheering us on. So the whole experience was a lot of fun to be a part of. And then the other teams also celebrated a lot of success. Wrestling finished second, and then D3 North Division goes across one of the Central Mass Quad Tournament, and then along the baseball loss in the quarterfinals of their state tournament. And TES just also had to congratulate all these angels who have been putting maps to a rock for setting a new school record in the 800 here. And at TES, we make a decision preparing the building protocol. Also preparation for the school year, the eighth students received their summer assignments. Students should reach out to their teachers if they have any questions. And all preschools, everyone have a good summer.
Thank you, Grace. You did a great job.
Nice stuff.
For unfinished business, sorry, personnel, notification of appointments. We have John DeRozier, a 1.0 TES second shift custodian. Welcome on, John. Now for unfinished business.
Correct. We'll jump into the slide deck, Madam Chair, at this time. Unfinished business, though. So the first piece is the school committee meeting schedule. I know it was a snafu last time and that I discussed it, but it wasn't in your drive. It's been in your drive regularly. And essentially, the conversation is that we're going to go back to pre-COVID meeting schedule, which will be the first and third Tuesday of the month. And we'll also, as always, provide the committee the opportunity to call more meetings as needed throughout the year. You'll see the only month that we don't have two meetings is April, given when April vacation falls. So we historically have split the difference with that one meeting in April. So I'm asking tonight if we can get an approval on the draft meeting schedule as is, and again, if we need to add meetings, particularly, you know, I have August 31st in mind. Our first meeting, our last meeting this summer is August 17th. Excuse me, our next and last meeting is August 17th. If we feel as though we need another school committee meeting for August 31st before the year starts, particularly in light of any DESI guidance that may come out, I think that makes sense to call one at that time. But to get back to the first and third Tuesday of the month, I think we start with this as a baseline, and then we'll make a determination on August 17th that that works for everyone.
I'll seek a motion to approve the 2021-2022 school committee meeting schedule as presented by Dr. Flanagan.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry 6-0-0.
Great. Thank you for that. The next piece of business is the subcommittee assignments. This is awkward for me every year. I do the best I can to keep seven members of the committee happy, give it everyone their first choice, but obviously, there are only so many slots. So this is in your drive right now. The rationale behind this was, we do put it out to the committee to see what interests them, where they would like to land on these subcommittee assignments. Two subcommittees specifically that we held harmless are negotiations, because we are close to being, towards the end of negotiations right now with both Unit A and Unit D. So we kept that subcommittee the same, and we kept the budget subcommittee the same. And the reason we kept the budget subcommittee the same is because that was a committee that's new, that started in January or February last year. So they've only been at it for a few months. So for continuity purposes, I think it made sense to keep those the same. Other than that, kind of went up to the committee, sought their first and second choice, and came up with this as a draft schedule. You see two spots highlighted in yellow. That is the MAS-C conference, joint MAS-C, MAS-S conference that happens every November down in Hyannis. We historically elect, or you select, a member of your committee to be a representative, as a delegate at that conference, and an alternate at that conference. So I left those open, figured we can do that tonight at this point, but the rest of the committees seem to work out.
Madam Chair, I'd nominate Mr. Mullen as our representative for the MAS-C conference.
Second.
Any discussion?
So, Mr. Mullen, you'd be available to go?
I would be available to go to those meetings, yes.
Okay, great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 6-0-0.
And if I could make a motion that Ms. Costucci be the backup for that meeting.
Second.
Can we discuss?
Do you have the time to this year?
I just don't know if I'm going to get the time. I gotta do Parents Weekend in Florida and take my kids down to Florida. I mean, it's a great opportunity if somebody else wants to try. It's a great--
It's a three-day conference, the first week--
I mean, I love going, and I would love to go. I just don't know if I can take extra time off at that point this year.
Well, I'll say this, that this year, there's going to be a remote component of it. So for the delegate meeting, if we needed to zoom someone in, you would have the right to zoom in. So even if Rob, we're only selecting an alternate if Rob can't be at the meeting, so--
I'll make it.
Make it. All right, so we're gonna send you an alternate.
That's fine.
Let it go on the alternate. But as far as the subcommittee assignments are concerned, I'll seek a motion to approve the 2021-2022 school committee's subcommittee assignments as presented.
I'll make that motion to approve the assignments.
I will second it.
Any discussion? Any discussion on that?
Well, actually, Ryan and I are discussing the, not the bill signer, but the payroll portion. It was, Ryan had done the payroll last year, going over to Town Hall.
No?
No.
I can.
Who was doing payroll then last year?
I thought it was Rob Mullen.
I thought it was you.
I thought it was Rob Mullen.
Historically, if a number of them remain unsigned, they'd reach out to me to let me know. However, with the change in personnel at Town Hall, I'm not sure if they were looking for the third signature. I mean, the Superintendent approves, as well as myself as preparer, but I will reach out to Town Hall tomorrow.
I didn't sign one of them last year. Okay. I thought that when we had the conversation last year, that there would be an alternative, and I believe that that was Ryan. Maybe I'm mistaken on that, but then Ryan had said that he didn't go over to sign any either.
Yeah, I don't recall Ryan being part of that, but--
That's fine. Maybe I'm, maybe I just got a bad memory about it.
I'll look into it with Town Hall and reach out to both of you to see how they wanna--
So right now, it's listed as Rob. Are you able to do that if need be?
Excuse me?
Are you able to do it if need be?
I'm not sure. It depends on when it is and, you know, if it's regular or--
Okay.
I'd have to find out what the details are about first.
Okay. So I don't want to hold up the rest of the committees, so we can pull payroll out.
Sure, let's pull payroll out. Yep. So let's revise this. I'll seek a motion to approve the 2021-2022 school committee's subcommittee assignments excluding the payroll signer.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion number? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 6-0-0. Witsen's services.
Mr. Messina, please.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, Madam Chair. This is the annual renewal of our food service agreement with Witsens. As most of you are aware, the DESI guidelines require that we go out to bid on a one-year contract with four one-year amendments for a total of five years. And they do require that the school committee vote to accept each of the amendments as they come up. Next school year is going to be the third of the four amendments that are attached to the one-year contract that was previously executed. Generally, we bring Witsens in, both Scott, the District Manager, and Tracy, our Food Service Director, to have a conversation about pricing. As you're aware, this year, the year that just ended, all meals were free through the Seamless Summer Option. DESI has extended that to June of 2022. So once again, next school year, all of the meals served will be paid for by DESI. So there wasn't really any discussion in pricing, so we didn't think it necessary to have Witsens here to discuss future operations since we're pretty much locked in at pricing for the items.
Thank you. So I'll seek a motion to exercise the third of four years amendment to afford a one-year contract extension to Witsen's Food Services for the 21-20 school year.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry 6-0-0.
Thank you.
Business?
Madam Chair, under new business, we have a pharmacy, we need to have a conversation about TES Playground. As you know, for those who don't know at home, we have three separate play areas at TES. We have an early childhood's play area, we have a lower elementary play area, and an upper elementary play area. Right now, our upper elementary play area is in disrepair. We've been forced over the past several years to dismantle some of the equipment because it's dangerous, it's no longer ADA compliant, it's failing, you can't get replacement parts for it. We've had several injuries on some of the equipment over there that we just deemed that this equipment isn't appropriate at an elementary playground in any day, in 2021. It was okay in 2000, but things have evolved. The life expectancy on the equipment is 10 to 15 years. Right now, we're at 21 years, it's the original equipment that's been there. It has been on a discussion point with our Capital Asset Management Committee for several years. It has made the Capital Asset Management Committee plan, that is also in your drive. You can see the five-year outlook for the Capital Asset Committee. But basically, our thought was that we need to replace the playground equipment in two phases. Phase one would be the upper elementary playground, phase two would be the lower elementary playground. To get the ball rolling on this, when we had Capital Asset Management come in, we needed some quotes. So we got some quotes from local contractors in Venice who had done local playgrounds that our administration had gone out and seen and thought were appropriate and were excellent. So I've included a couple quotes recently that we had done last week in your backup as well, just so you can kind of get a sense of where we're looking to go. And I think you'll see, based on your old vision of monkey bars and things like that, it's evolved to what the equipment can be, and how it needs to be accessible for all students. So the numbers are pretty true. To do the playground, both playgrounds, not the early childhood center, we're looking at about $440,000. So it's still part of our Capital Asset Management Plan, but we're at the point now where we need to close that playground, the upper elementary playground. The equipment is beyond repair and it's dangerous. We had several accidents at the end of the year. The slides are no longer functioning, they're not even secured at the base anymore, there are cracks coming down the slides. Unfortunately, it seems like some kids are getting hands caught in there playing with it. So I just want to get in front of this committee, let you know that the intent is, once our roof project is complete, right now, they're working on the dormers as part of our old Capital Asset Plan, once those dormers are complete, we are going to dismantle the dangerous equipment on the TES playground, and we will look to have more structured recess time. Let me rephrase that. Not more structured recess time, more structured activities for recess time for the students. Most of the kids at the upper elementary, they're playing basketball, they're playing kickball, they're playing these ball sport games out there, which is all well and good. We just need to remove some of the dangerous equipment, get it out of the way. It'll allow them more time to have activities and play and run, but it's not necessarily going to be on the equipment that's there. So I just wanted to get in front of this committee, let you know that our intent is to dismantle that playground upon completion of the roof project, and certainly, as we get to Capital Asset Management this year, that is absolutely a top priority because we're going to have to replace that next year for the kids moving forward. So I'm happy to answer any questions about that. Again, I put some backup information into the drive, and so people at home know that the information that's in the drive, that is not a specific vendor or concept that we're going with, it's an idea at this point. You know, this would be a capital project that would have to go out to bid and follow all MCPPO guidelines. So I just want to get in front of the committee, let you know that's what's going to happen over the next couple of weeks, once the roof is completed.
Is this just the upper elementary playground that we're dismantling right now?
Yeah, thank you for that, it is. The consultant came out and looked at the lower elementary playground, said, "Yeah, this needs work too, and this needs to be replaced and/or repaired, but you're okay here for another couple of years." So that's why that's in the second year of the--
Can you just, for the public, provide the breakout of grades? Who uses the upper elementary versus the lower elementary?
Sure. So lower elementary is primarily K-1, 2. Preschool uses the early childhood one, and grades 3, 4, and 5 use the upper elementary. So it's grades 3, 4, and 5 that would lose the equipment for next year. Still have the space, still have all the opportunities to go out and play and run around and be kids, they just wouldn't have the structures.
Many districts in several states have been using ARP funding to purchase new playground equipment, to give schools the ability to have more social distancing while out and play. Is that something that we can look to use to be able to immediately replace?
Yes, so I emailed Matt Hanson last week with all the information, all the quotes. We've had a conversation about it. If that's a potential, we're absolutely going to look at that. But yes, we are having that conversation right now.
Okay. At least for the first portion of it, you know, if the lower elementary can last another year or two, that buys us some time to get that done through Capital Asset.
It does. And you know, I shared our concerns with Matt, he completely understands it, and you know, he's going to have those conversations, and if we can, we will. Of course, that'd be a process, a bidding process, it would be a 30-day, but it is what it is, yeah.
Of course, right, yeah.
And I don't mean to be a downer, but I'm going to be. I was talking to a consultant today on a personal project, that playground project that I'm working on, and she said that the problem now is the amount of time that it takes to get this equipment because of COVID. Supply chains are way backed up, so that's something to just be aware of, I'm sure. I'm sure you are.
Just $230,000 for a playground for your average Joe would be outrageous. If I wasn't sitting on this committee, I'd say I can buy a swing set for $500. What drives the cost, or could you talk about the ground prep and--
Sure.
--all that kind of stuff, and ADA compliance?
So right now, right now, the ground surface over at the playground is bark mulch. You can't have bark mulch anymore. That needs to be gone. That needs to be like a vulcanized rubber kind of padded surface that needs to be done the right way. All of the play structures need to be accessible to all students. So you're looking at students with ambulatory issues, students wheelchair bound, they need to be able to access all that play equipment. Monkey bars didn't do that 20 years ago, so we need to make sure the play structure's appropriate for all of our kids. So we're looking at modified equipment with different availabilities and capacities. So I am certainly not a playground expert by any stretch of the imagination, but you know, the base padding alone, you're looking at $90,000 just for that. You know, then the structures, each of the structures, to make sure that they are durable, powder coated, they last forever, you know, we're not talking residential swing set, we're talking commercial-grade property, commercial-grade structures.
All right, thank you for that.
All right, so we can move on to Point B, if there's no more discussion. 9B is the TPS policy practices in discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we've historically, Dr. Branko and I have passed four years, I think, of manned the policy subcommittee, and we've done the yeoman's work in bringing the policy manual to where it is today. I think, I think it's time that we evolve, and I think it's time that we move towards MAS-C and using their policy services and updating our policies. I think the amount of work that's gone into the policy manual has been incredible. I think a lot of people on this board have put a lot of time in, we've done a great job with it. But the fact of the matter is, we're not school law attorneys, and there is a possibility that there are things not in that policy manual that would leave us open, open and liable. So the hope is, and I think a lot of communities are making this migration, the hope is that this committee would support us working with MAS-C, who has a policy service program, for lack of a better term, where they would look at all of our policies, they would look at all our collective borrowing agreements, all of our job descriptions, they would take all that information, we would send it to them, and they would vet all of the information and compare it to their exemplar. And then we would be able to work with MAS-C, Mass Association of School Committee, over the next 10 months to develop a policy manual that is vetted by a school law attorney that is tight, that protects this district and community, and is updated regularly when new laws come on, or when laws change. It's been, you know, there's a $10,000 cost to this that can be broken out over a three-year period in MAS-C billing. To me, this is the best $10,000 we can spend. You know, if we're negligent on one law, we sued for one thing that we weren't covered on policy-wise, it's certainly going to be far more than $10,000. So I think in a best interest now to protect the district, I think a lot of our policies are Tinsboroized and customized to Tinsboro, and I think that's great, and I think that's going to be the bulk of the work over the next 10 months, to say, "Here's an exemplar, here's what Tinsboro looks like, how do we meld it," and bring it back to this committee for final review. So in terms of conversation with MAS-C, what they do is, they will consult with the district, and they've done it different ways in different communities, and I have a suggestion for this committee, but what they've done in other communities is, they bring the policy subcommittee in once a month for two and a half, three-hour meetings, and they go through all that conversation, and they work through the policy manual. In other districts, they've appointed one member of the school committee. In other districts, they've appointed the Superintendent or Assistant Superintendent to do that work. Given where we are and what we've done, and certainly my history within, Mark's history with it, I would certainly recommend that if this committee is comfortable, that you appoint me as your delegate to do all the groundwork with MAS-C, to come back and present to the policy subcommittee, to say, "Here's the exemplar, here's where we were, here's our suggestion and rationale moving forward." So the school committee will still go through the policy subcommittee to approve it, and then bring it to the full committee for final approval. But I would do the behind-the-scenes backend work with MAS-C to prepare it for you. So my recommendation is that we go with MAS-C, and that you appoint me as the person behind the scenes to do the legwork, to bring it to the policy subcommittee first, then the full school committee.
Do you really have the time for that?
Yes. I'll make the time for that. It's important. No, it's important, I appreciate it. Yeah, but given my history of being on that policy subcommittee forever--
You just do so much.
Yeah, but it needs to happen for our district. Thank you, but it needs to happen for our district.
And honestly, if, I mean, you know, if we don't, if something gets updated in real time in the law, this way, my understanding is, MAS-C knows it, if you've got this agreement in place, all of a sudden, our policies are instantly updated, we're not going to be caught going through the process locally and rewriting. It just puts us in the right position.
Oh, no, no, I'm absolutely in support of this. It's being in support of somebody who has the time to put into it, that's all. But if you say you can, then, then yeah.
Appreciate it. The next component of that is, I would actually encourage us, and we're not there yet, we're a year out from there, is having our policy manual hosted on the MAS-C site. So if you have an opportunity at some point, and you go to that MAS-C site, MAS-C.org, if you go to the online policies, you'll see about 70 to 100 districts with very similar policies, all customized a little bit for their community, that are online right there. So we would have that link right on our homepage, and that would be our policies all the time. I think it's important work that needs to be done, and I think it's done in the best interest of the district.
I'll seek a motion to authorize Dr. Flanagan to enter the contract for policy services.
I'll make that motion.
I will second that.
Discussion?
Should we amend that to also have him be our liaison with that group?
You'd have what, Barry?
Amend it so he is our contact person.
I'll-- Easier for minutes. So I'll make a motion, or I'll seek a motion to authorize Dr. Flanagan to contract for policy services with MAS-C and to act as our liaison for those services.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry 6-0-0.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Finance, Mr. Messina.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had six bill warrants presented to the school committee tonight. I do have them all back approved. In your drive, there are two lists. One is the last five fiscal '21 warrants that are dated June 30th, as well as our first FY '22 warrant dated today. And all warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts are in that drive.
Also in your drive for signing of payroll, we have the July 5th pay date, and it is in your drive as two different fiscal years. One component of it is the June 30th component, as well as the first FY '22 payroll with those expenses in your drive. That is it.
Discussion?
Stuck up on me there. I have nothing at this time, except, welcome, Grace, appreciate you being here, and for Dustine, welcome, I hope this works out really well, hope you enjoy it. Okay.
So I know last week we congratulated the softball girls, but personally, congratulations, Grace, being a member of the team, and congratulations, Dustine, for Sammy being on the team, a great accomplishment. I also want to congratulate Trevor Drew, who is an upcoming junior TES, he finished in 10th place in the Lowell City Golf Tournament last weekend, which is a huge achievement, so he's a rising golf star in the community, so congratulations to him, thank you.
We kicked off our first day of summer programming today over at TES, Grace talked about that a little bit earlier, but fantastic first day with our ESY program and our Jump Start Extension. Kudos to Greg Costa and Katie Leahy, our program coordinators, for getting everybody in there, working well, look forward to a great four and five program over there. Thank you to those individuals, the parents who sent you kids, and the kids will work hard right out of the gate on day one.
I'm all set, thank you. Also, congratulations to Ms. Pullman, welcome. Thank you for being here and volunteering for our group. And that's it.
I obviously like to congratulate the softball team and their championship, you guys worked really, really hard all year for that, it's really nice that your hard work for years have paid off and brought such acclaim to the town. Thank you for all your well wishes, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm all set.
So congratulations and welcome, both new members at the table. Trevor Drew's killing me, because one of those tournaments happens at my golf club, and I couldn't even come close to playing with him, I shoot for nine, he shoots for 18, so great job, Trevor, it was exciting to see that. That's it.
Grace, congratulations on your first successful school committee meeting, you did a great job today, we're happy to have you here, and we look forward to many more meetings with you. And also, you know, I want to say thank you to Mr. Crawford, even though he took off, but, you know, part of open meeting is that we have, we're open for visitors, comments and questions, and I appreciate the feedback that we received, and I appreciate the open dialogue. With that being said, we do have a need for executive session this evening to discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body as declared by the Chair. We'll return from executive session only to adjourn the regular session meeting. During this executive session, Mr. Tinnarella and I will recuse ourselves and exit due to conflict of interest. This executive session requires a roll call, though.
Need a motion in favor? Need a motion first?
Can I take a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Can I go now?
Yes.
All right, thank you. In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.